Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, April 13th, and our first item is to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion?
My question is, I know at the beginning of the pandemic, we talked- About having rehires on the consent agenda. Is that still our practice? At what point do we want to reevaluate that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Moser, you're correct. Because of the pandemic, you had moved, well, variety of reasons, two reasons really. One, the pandemic and limiting the number of people that were here, and also there's some discussion about with positions in the budget, the Board generally approved those, and so we certainly could, we can certainly bring that back if you'd like to have that before the, before the commission.
Well, I'm, Mr. Chair, I think it's probably appropriate to bring those back to the meeting setting. I think it's beneficial, especially having two new commissioners, having those discussions as we move into budget rounds, I think is appropriate. So it's my, my hope that we can, can maybe change the format.
Okay, all right. I think we can-
Could we get a motion? Because we did have a motion to, to do it the other-
Um, let's see, we, we can't have a motion within the motion.
Yeah.
Finish, all right. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, I don't know if we need the exact wording as we did before, but from here on out, change our policy on, on replacements for employees from consent agenda to regular board agenda items.
Okay. I think we can maybe state that we're reinstating the original process for, okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Moser. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, the same. Motion carried. All right. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Do we have anyone online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
All right. You can move in. Yes.
I have received several emails over the last month, continuation and concern for flow and time and the amount of time it takes to get some things done at DMV. And I know that we've had lots of staff discussions, I, with department heads and our administrator, but I think now is maybe appropriate time to say that those concerns are continuing. And I'm, I'm not sure what we need to do to reduce those times. It's not fair nor good practice to make people commit to spending two to five hours in a week to get a simple process done at the DMV. So, you know, I, I don't know if we need to direct Steve to kind of work on that flow or, or what, but I think now is an appropriate time.
I agree. I've gotten, I've gotten some concerns regarding that too, and I think maybe, I think Darren, Darren had asked for a pick meeting next week. I wonder if we can, maybe if we can see if it, if that's not too much to ask, if we could maybe talk and see if we can get Lori in, in, that might be a good place to start would be in pick to find out what personnel-wise, if that's the problem or what we have going on. So, Steve, if you can arrange all that?
I will do that, Mr. Chair.
Is that, was that-
Yeah, and I, I don't know if it's a personnel issue. I think it's probably part of that. I don't know if it's a public information piece that we're not being clear with folks what exactly you need. I, you know, I'm not sure of that, but I do know that we made an, you know, an adjustment in terms of where that location was and ensured the citizens that their services would be improved, and I don't necessarily know if that's the case.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've had some messages and I've seen it on social media, and it's something we, we should definitely research more and try to resolve. And then maybe if we can have our department head from the DMV come to that pick meeting too. All right, now we'll move on to bills and vouchers.
Both to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Next, we have our COVID-19 update with Public Health Director Kathy McKay, and Jamie is here again today. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, I passed out the weekly COVID report. So you can see the number of cumulative cases and, and they've increased since last week, both in Minnesota and in Clay County in general. Our, our cumulative deaths are 89 in Clay County, and they've increased in Minnesota a bit as well. Out of isolation is just those that have recovered and are out of isolation from their time where they had COVID. So those numbers, of course, are comparative to the active cases and the cumulative cases. Our active cases continue to rise, so our case investigators' contact tracers are, are still pretty busy with those active cases. We're seeing an increase in those, increase in the numbers, both in Clay County and of course across Minnesota as well. So the number of cases are, are, we're watching those as they, as they go up a bit. The median age has been 33 for the last few weeks. Our number of hospital admissions and ICU admissions across the state of Minnesota, we're seeing quite an uptick. We're at a level as we were back in October, and so we're really seeing that level. That wasn't the highest peak, but we're, we're seeing an increase. So the level we're at right now is, is where we were back in October. So it's, it's a bit concerning that we're seeing that high level. The numbers across the river in our healthcare facilities, we're seeing less of an uptick, but a little bit of an uptick. I know their emergency rooms are where they're seeing a, a lot of, a lot more activity. So they're busier at those healthcare facilities in Fargo. And then our 14-day case rate, again, consistent with the number of cases that are rising, it's at 40.45. Last week, it was at 29.94. So we're seeing that consistently along with the increase in our cases.
Kathy, what was our, what's our highest that we had at that?
14-day case rate? 186 something?
I want to go back there again, but-
Yeah, that was, that was really high, and, and it was low for quite a long time. And so now we're just seeing that, that increase with the number of cases that we have. In the, the active cases by age, so it's still that 20 to 24 age range, range has been consistently the higher ones in the last few weeks. So we're seeing that group, and we've been really strategic about trying to get students in higher ed vaccinated. It's, you know, we're against a timeline because of course their classes are done either the end of April or first part of May, but we've really been trying to encourage them. We were arranging to get a mobile unit out to those facilities, but now there's going to be a, we're going to have to halt that, and Jamie will talk about that in a little bit. The cumulative cases by age, again, are still the 20 to 24. So that seems to be the, the age range. We're seeing some in, in the K-12 schools as well, and as you can see with the news, there's, there's various events that have created quite an increase in cases. There was a wrestling event in South Dakota, and there's a large number of cases from some schools that attended in Minnesota as well. So some of those events are still quite the spreaders. So, and again, I talked about the hospitalization, so they're really watching that, the increase in hospitalizations across Minnesota. So that's what we're seeing. You can see from the graph that there's, there's been kind of a steady incline with those in hospitalization and those in ICU. And then I included the request for the weekly testing activities. So that was the vault testing. So you can see, this is from the start of this year. So you can see the number of tests that were completed, and then the number of Minnesota residents versus the non-Minnesota residents, which is mostly the North Dakota ones that come over, and then the positivity rate. So as you look at the positivity rate, you know, it was quite, quite low in January and February, and, and now we did see the highest of the week of March 28th, the positivity rate for that testing site was 9.09%. This last week now, it's 7.91%. So still a fair number of people. You see that 1342, the number of tests, just this last, the week of April 4th. So a fair number of people still going to the testing site, which is great for, for all the individuals that need to get the, a test done. It's the saliva testing. Results are coming back fairly quickly, sometimes within 24 hours. So it's a good, good means to get a test. Any questions on?
Yes, Commissioner.
I had asked Kathy to bring forward this information. I know that there was discussions within the community wondering how long that site was going to continue to be in Morehead. I think one item that is important to highlight is the amount of non-Minnesota residents that are continuing to use the site. And I, I think it's, it speaks to the volume of, we're really all in this together. North Dakota was helpful in Minnesota residents getting back some testing early on, but it continues to be a, a spot where a lot of people are using it. I was honestly surprised to see that the numbers of usage were this high continuing. So I appreciate that. I know that there are some employers that are requiring employees to be tested. So I think that that's probably helpful for folks to know that that's an option if they need to.
Yes, exactly. And even those that travel, sometimes they'll want to get tested if they're unsure, depending on where they travel to.
Do our higher education facilities encourage their students to go there?
To the testing site? Yes, absolutely. So, and, and even the K-12 schools, they're asking parents and their-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I have another question in terms of the state sites that they have. Are they all still operational as they were a couple months ago, or have they shifted around where sites are?
Are you talking about the testing sites, state testing sites? Yes, as far as I know, they're still operational. We haven't heard any when they're going to demobilize, but they're still active and available. So they have not given us a, a date at all, even a projected date.
So the shortages in those tests that we had seen early on are not an issue right now?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And may I add also, we still have the opportunity for home testing?
Right, thank you.
So that's another option for people as well. Minnesota Department of Health is encouraging families, if they travel or they're involved in activities, to test, and so as, as many opportunities as we can have for the public to-
Can you remind us how one gets the home test?
Well, you can order the home test, and it's shipped to your home, and let's see. To order at, at-home COVID testing for Minnesota residents on the Minnesota governor's site. There's a link there. There's also a link on the Minnesota Department of Health site. So at-home COVID testing for Minnesota.
Is it possible to put that on our-
Sure. It's on the website, and it's on the Facebook page.
It is on our, okay. Excellent.
Okay, so just looking at vaccine, we continue to provide vaccines, and last week it was just almost 1,000. So we were at 999 doses that we administered last week, which was a little bit less than what we had hoped for. The, the challenge with getting those doses, as we talked about, exists. So we did open it up, and we did everything we could, contacting the media to encourage people to come in. We have, we had staff that went to the site to register on-site. We have a QR code that we're able to use if people want to come and use their phone and register. So we tried to do everything we could to make it as easy for people as well. The challenge was that on the Fargo side and our healthcare systems, our pharmacies, we're all saying, we have plenty of vaccine and so come. So, but this week, we are doing, actually administering 1,000 second doses. So most of our focus is on second doses, but we also have some first doses. So we've separated those clinics just for ease, but we're mixing it up now. So if, if people want first doses, we can do that. The nice thing too is with a higher number of doses available to us, we have the ability to accommodate people that have not, they're coming back from down south, or, you know, they've received their vaccine, their first vaccine from one of the pilot sites. So giving them an opportunity. We had one of our pharmacies that said they were no longer doing Moderna, so they're referring them to public health. So that's nice that we have an opportunity for second doses.
Steve, are we, are, are we giving our employees an opportunity to take time to run over and get one if they, if there's available for them? Okay.
What are the hours of operation of that?
It depends, for us, depends on the day. So for this week, we are having a clinic today from 11 to 2:00, and then on Wednesday, we have two clinics from 9:00 to 1:00 and from 2:00 to 4:00. Thursday, 9:00 to 1:00, Friday, 9:00 to 1:00. And the times that we are scheduling are centered around utilizing the students in our universities. So that's why we're, we're going with the times that we have. But we also dip into evenings and do what we can to accommodate people's schedules as well.
What do you mean by you go do evenings?
If we, like to accommodate the school staff, the childcare centers, we've, we've strategically scheduled clinics in the evenings to accommodate those needs. So that's what I'm saying.
Can the public go into those then, or just the schools?
At the time that we were doing them, yes, but now we're, we're not, we don't have them this week. So it varies depending on who we're serving. So when we did schedule those clinics to accommodate the school staff, which was early on, we've, you know, finished all of the school staff, we did evening clinics, and yes, the public was able to register for those clinics as well. But this week, we don't have any evening clinics.
How does the public come aware when there's that extra, is that posted on the news, or?
Correct. And then what, the way we schedule is that they register with us, and when they register, they see the times that we have available.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
But we haven't received any complaints at all about access. But again, I want to point out that there is a lot of access in the community for vaccine, a lot of opportunities. So, okay, so getting back to the data, basically, the total number of individuals with at least one dose of vaccine in Clay County were at 36.8% in Minnesota, 47.3. Total number of people who've completed the series in Clay County, 21, 26.1, and statewide, 32.2. People aged 50 to 64 with at least one dose, 40, 45.7, and 50.9 in Minnesota. 60 people with, aged 65 with at least one dose, 73.4% in Clay County, and 84.1. And then cumulative 11,896 doses. So we are still lagging behind, but at one of our regional calls this week, we did have a discussion about the North Dakota pharmacies, which we know a lot of the Clay County residents are accessing for vaccine, and those data numbers are not going into that.
So Jamie, the, it's my understanding that herd immunity from the CDC standpoint is, is that 70% or over? Is that, is that correct?
Right.
So if we were, if everybody in Clay County was 65 or older, we'd have herd, herd immunity.
Right.
Right.
Unfortunately, we're not all.
No, we're 65.
Some of us are, and some of us are not. But anyway, I guess, so, so of course, it took us from, oh, maybe the first or second week in January-
Yeah.
-to this point to get to that percentage level for, for 65 and older. Are we kind of tracking where we are with other age groups in terms of their percentages? And at some point in time, I'm, I'm concerned that we're only at 26.1% as a, as a county as a whole. Now, I know we're just, we've just gotten started here, what, in the last two weeks, where it opened up to everybody, right?
Correct.
But I, can we, is there any way we can compare trends with those other age groups compared to? It'd sure be nice to see in three or four months' time where our entire county would be at that 70%, but it doesn't look like it's going that rapidly.
Right.
What, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we do have the ability to track that data in MIC for Clay County and for our region. But the other thing is just to kind of note that we really need to focus on education about vaccine, because there is still, you know, the resistance of taking the vaccine, and that's what the providers who are trying to provide that vaccine have been faced with.
And that, and that's exactly why I would like that data, because it clearly shows that there needs to be more education. There's a lot of people concerned. They're concerned maybe about taking one type versus another, and then of course, the news this morning that Johnson &amp; Johnson is off the shelf for a little while. You know, so it's, I mean, I think it's, we have to do whatever we can to promote it too, and understanding that there's, some people just have different beliefs, but-
Right. Can I talk a little bit about Johnson &amp; Johnson's?
Sure you can.
Just one comment before you do that, though. So that we, the state also, and we believe that this 26.1 is, is much higher, because we aren't capturing all of those like Jamie mentioned in, in North Dakota. So even those that went to the VA, those that go to the pharmacies, and it's slow to get the information also from the North Dakota Immunization Registry up to Minnesota Registry. So we do know that we're much higher than that 26.1%. It's just, we, we aren't able to get that number.
So before you go to Jamie, to that talking about Johnson &amp; Johnson, so why, why is it good to reach herd immunity?
Well, just like the vaccines that prevent any disease, it's just so we have the majority of people, and that, and that's why we really push the vaccine, so the majority of people, then you're protecting yourself and others. So you really want-
Doesn't that really reduce the, the ability to, to spread?
Reduce, yeah. Reduce the spread is, is a big thing for, so as many people that can get vaccinated. It's really important, particularly when we talk about, they're, they're working on the vaccine for emergency use authorization for the 12-year-old to 16-year-olds. And so, you know, they aren't, you know, they aren't protected at all. They can't get the immunization yet. But, so you're right, it's to protect everyone in our community.
I'd like to see us get there. Jamie, you want to talk about Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Oh, Johnson &amp; Johnson, as you heard, you know, they're looking at some concerns with blood clots, and I believe it was in the news is all we've heard. We haven't officially heard from Minnesota Department of Health yet today, but they are putting a hold on the Johnson &amp; Johnson. In the last couple of weeks, we've worked very hard to access Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and we do have some for this week as well. The focus for that is on populations that struggle with housing, so they're more difficult to find. And so we had vaccine available. We do have some scheduled today, actually, that we're going to have to cancel. But also Kathy has worked very hard with the state of Minnesota to try to access Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine for the students, the college students that have time for just one dose, and then will be leaving. So dispersing all over. And, and we haven't had the ability to access the vaccine for that population, except a very small amount that we had that was left last week. But, but it's unfortunate, because it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to vaccinate those individuals that are difficult to catch for their second dose. So.
Is that something that, that you're going to be able to save what you have, or it's not going to be ruined, is it?
We haven't gotten an official word yet from the state health department. They did ask that we would redistribute it if we didn't use all the 200 doses we had this week. So we'll have to see what their plans are for us.
I'm sure they won't want it redistributed. I'm sure they're going to want either for us to hold it or, or ask for it back.
But the storage is, is not a problem.
Storage for that, not, at this point, is not a problem. That's correct. We did have a, a mobile unit that we secured also to get to the higher ed. So they, they all expressed that it'd be so much easier if there could be a unit that did come to the campuses. So I was working with a group that was, that was coming next week to the higher ed campuses, and they were going to use Johnson &amp; Johnson. So-
When you talk about a mobile unit, Kathy, what, where do you, where does that come from? Where do you get that?
The one I was working with was Essentia. Essentia Health had a mobile unit that we just had some contacts. I made the request and, and asked if they could come to our higher ed facilities.
So that's, it's their, it's their bus or whatever it is that they-
Correct. Yes, yes. They, they had the ability to have the nurses, the vaccine, and the, and the mobile, whatever they, whatever they had for a mobile unit to go out to the students, which I thought was a lot easier, and that was, that was a request. So unfortunately, they were going to bring Johnson &amp; Johnson to the students because they're soon done. So that was unfortunate.
Commissioner Moser.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a conversation with Representative Keeler this week. I know that we talked about the 72-hour piece, and she and I kind of worked through some of that. She did compliment Clay County, you are doing great things, and that's, that's probably why the 72-hour hold makes sense for other counties, but doesn't necessarily make sense for Clay County. So she'll continue to work with it, work that through. You know, I, I know early on, I referenced, we do have shut-ins in elderly within Clay County that transportation is an issue. And in seeing how the people with 65 and older with at least one dose only has risen like 1%, 1 and 1/2% for the past few weeks. Have we identified is transportation an issue for those folks to get them to get a vaccination? One, and if it is, there are agencies like Lakes &amp; Prairies that has a rural transport bus. Have we talked about having a nurse on a bus to reach shut-in communities, or go to the senior centers within rural Clay County to have vaccination sites? I know it's a lot of legwork, but would that help us?
We actually have been working with them. They have coordinators that work with the senior population, and we've been working with them. And, and really, you know, we're being told that people are able to access vaccine, either through their local clinic, pharmacy, or public health. But that was our focus is on transportation. So thank you for sharing that with us, and that's why we did reach out to them. We do have a list of people still that are homebound. It's not a large list. It's about 10, 15 people. And so those, we were hoping Johnson &amp; Johnson would be a good source for them as well. So that was our plan. But we do have, we've spoken with all of the providers of home care in our community, and with the social services and public health staff that work with the waivered services clients, the land of the dancing sky, to identify those individuals. So that's, that's encouraging that there's such a small number.
And I, my follow-up to that is I think it's important that the public, in hearing these discussions, know that it's a person's choice.
Mm-hmm.
You, it's your choice to have these. We are in no, no way giving it to folks that aren't consenting, and-
Correct.
That's important. But we feel that it's safe, and, you know, I personally made the choice to have vaccination, and I think that, that it's, it's what we can do to help the betterment of our community.
I agree. I too had the shots. Jamie, do you have any more for us?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have our severe weather awareness week. Emergency Director Gabe, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take an opportunity to promote Minnesota Severe Weather Awareness Week. Thought this was a good chance to make the public a little more aware of the activities that will be going on across the state of Minnesota this week.
You mean like the blizzards that we're having?
It looks more like it should be a winter weather awareness week, but it is, we're focusing more on spring and summer weather type events. So to start off, the state has it broken down into a, a different topic for each day of the week this week. And Monday was alerts and warnings. Tuesday is severe weather, lightning and hail. Wednesday, the focus is floods. Thursday is kind of the day that most people will be more aware of, because there will be siren testing, and that is tornadoes. And then Friday, the topic is extreme heat. So a way that I'm promoting this in the county is on the county website, on the main page down towards the bottom, there's a, a banner or a flyer from emergency management, and there is a slideshow that Tim DeForge is adding to every day this week. So yesterday, he put on, on several slides that were provided to me by HSEM and the Department of Public Safety. and the Department of Public Safety, just talking about, you know, defining what the different types of weather warnings are and some other tips and information about that. And then today at 9:00, well, right now, there'll be another block of slides talking about severe weather, lightning and hail mainly, and some safety tips and things like that. And then so on throughout the week. That is going to be on the county website. And then also Clay County's Facebook page or the Sheriff's Office Facebook page is promoting that. Kind of the big thing I wanted to make sure the public is aware of is on Thursday, the state will be testing, doing tornado siren testing. So that will be at 1:45 PM and again at 6:45 PM. And I'd like to encourage the public, businesses, homes to, you know, this is a good opportunity to talk to your family members, your employees, about what we do in the event of a tornado warning, where we go, and then practice that. And I know the county, the county campus will be conducting drills. But it's a good reminder to do that and also just to make the public aware if they hear sirens going off those two different times during the day, that's what it is. NOAA weather radios will also be tested during that time. And then some local news stations, I believe WDAI is one that participates in it, there would be the scrolling message, you know, that's saying this is a test of the National Weather Service's emergency notification system. So that's really the big, you know, kind of the big event that most people are aware of. And it's probably one of the most important ones to, one to talk to your family members about and prepare for. A couple of other things, I guess I just wanted to bring up is CastClay Alerts is our new emergency notification system that we went to last fall. Just would like to encourage people to sign up for that. And all they have to do is type in castclayalerts.gov, and they can register for that. And this one is much more user-friendly than Code Red was. So if you want to deselect certain types of watches and warnings, it's much easier to do. So for instance, if you didn't want to receive like a thunderstorm watch, you can deselect out of that, or you can actually set times, alarms, you know, if you didn't want it to disturb you overnight during the day. The only thing you cannot opt out of is a tornado warning. We will not allow you to opt out of that. And then the other thing I thought I'd bring up is next week is North Dakota Severe Weather Awareness Week. So there will be on Wednesday tornado siren testing across the river. So I just wanted to make the public aware of that, especially if you're in Moorhead or near the border. You may hear sirens next Wednesday coming from the other side of the river. And that is their testing week, so.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Will there be any text alerts in association with these?
No, so we won't be, we won't be sending out any alerts through the Everbridge system. All the alerts will be just the siren testing and then the NOAA weather radios and through the.
I know in Moorhead, they have, don't they have like a weekly test of their sirens?
They do, the first Wednesday of the month, countywide, is they test the sirens just to make sure they're operating.
And that's going to continue?
Yep, that, so they did that actually last Wednesday.
Yeah.
But this one here is specifically the two different times. I think they do the two different times to probably capture it during school hours and when people are at work, and then again in the evening to promote probably more through residences and stuff when people are at home.
Okay.
That is all I have.
All right, thank you, Gabe.
All right, thank you.
All right, next we have the Commonwealth Development Corporation Affordable Housing Development Dilworth. Rhonda, you're going to lead this discussion?
Good morning, Ms. Chair.
Good morning, and I believe we have someone online too for this?
Yeah, Ted's here.
And Rhonda, you can maybe do the introductions.
Yes, I will, okay. Good morning. I am here today with Emma Schmidt with Community Action Partnership Lakes and Prairies. She is a partner to this project, so I asked her to just join us for any questions on her part. And then I wanted to also introduce you to Jamie Stewart. Jamie is our new financial services supervisor in our income maintenance unit. Larry Young has opted to move to an open caseload that we had in our disability unit. So we've filled his position with Jamie. Jamie comes to us from Stevens County. She was a supervisor in Stevens County. She worked with Norman County and White Earth Tribal Nation. So she has some amazing experience and is in her fourth week with us, so.
Welcome to Clay County.
So the housing support program that we'll be talking about in conjunction with Commonwealth Development Project is in Jamie's unit. So I asked her to join us. Okay, so we have Ted Goldsman on the line. He is with Commonwealth Development. And Commonwealth approached our agency a couple of months ago about a development that they are proposing in Dilworth. And if you recall, a year, well, actually, two years ago, we came before you with a very similar kind of project with Commonwealth in Moorhead. And that was North Moorhead. And the board approved the piece to that proposal that we're involved in, and I'll talk a little bit about that. They've submitted their application to Minnesota Housing Finance and received the funding that they were looking for. And we'll start, actually, we're going to start that development last year, but due to COVID and cost of building have put that off. And they're going to be starting that now relatively soon, and Ted can confirm that, but.
It's actually underway.
It's underway?
Yep, we started on April 1st, so.
Okay, so that is underway. So this is a separate and new project in Dilworth, but it's modeled after that North Moorhead. So maybe before Ted starts to talk about the proposal, I'll just recap a little bit about why the county becomes involved in these developments. For this particular development, it's an affordable housing development, but they're applying to Minnesota Housing Finance. And applicants, and Ted, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but applicants score better if they partner with the county and local service providers to address the housing needs of people that are considered high priority homeless or individuals that with disabilities that are low income and struggling with housing. So we've been approached by various developers over the years to partner with their development for setting aside some of the units to serve folks in these populations. The Moorhead, the North Moorhead development, we had of that, I want to say it was a 44 or 46-unit development, and we had identified 10 of those units to serve folks in this population. With this development, where it's a 44-unit development, we are proposing nine of those units be set aside for folks that are considered high priority homeless or folks with disabilities. Those nine units, that's where they become involved with the housing support program, which we administer on behalf of the state. So individuals who would be eligible for either of those nine units, the individuals themselves would apply for the housing support program, which is a state-funded program through our income maintenance unit. And based on eligibility criteria, may be eligible to receive those funds that help pay for their rent and then help pay for the services. So the county would enter into a housing support agreement. And in this proposal, it would be with Lakes and Prairies. And the housing support payment would go to Lakes and Prairies for the individual who would in turn pay the rent. And then there's also some additional funds that help pay for the services for the individuals living in the development. So it might be individuals maybe with some mental health support needs or chemical health needs or individuals with other disabilities or employment concerns or whatever, where Lakes and Prairies would be the service side of that, that service for the individuals living in the development. So the county would enter into a housing support agreement with Community Action Lakes and Prairies. So as a part of the application to Minnesota Housing Finance, there's some documents that they want the county to sign off on. And that's what was included in your packet. It's a letter of confirmation, which says, yep, we're partnering. Yep, we're looking at these nine units. And we're going to work together on serving the needs of the folks in those nine units. And then there is a letter of housing support funding, which basically says, yep, we're going to commit these nine units to the housing support program. I'm hoping I captured all of that correctly. Ted, if there's anything I missed, feel free to chime in. But otherwise, I would turn it over to you for presenting on your development.
Yeah, I mean, you hit everything on the head. Yeah, I can share my screen and kind of just give you guys, you know, a drawing of what the building is going to, on the site line. Let me know if you can see my screen. It looks like you can. So we are proposing, as mentioned, a 44-unit building. We actually just got unanimous approval last night for the zone change on this property for the building. So site-wise, we are.
Can you enlarge your screen by chance?
Yes, I can. Is that good?
Thank you.
So we are all zoned and ready to go on the zoning side of the project. And as mentioned, the, you know, homeless units and people with disability units are a large part of the scoring process. Essentially, if you bring forward a proposal to Minnesota Housing Finance and do not have these housing support units, you will not get the funding. So it, you know, the funding is a linchpin in order to be considered for these funding. And the reason is, Minnesota Housing Finance really wants to make sure that we are serving, you know, everyone that has, you know, potentially in the workforce. You know, even if you suffer from, you know, a disability or, you know, long-term homelessness, you know, you can have housing that is high quality and, you know, it's not being put with, you know, everyone that has disabilities. So it's really setting up people for success. So I'll just bring you down to what the building elevations look like. You know, architects put a lot of work into this, and we are very proud of, you know, this potential design. We think it's a really good fit for Dilworth. The city is super excited about, you know, the opportunity to have, you know, a new apartment project in their community. And so, you know, I'm equally as excited to, you know, bring a new project to Dilworth because, you know, I think it'll be a good fit for the community. You know, and any questions you guys have, I'm always available to answer and talk through anything.
Questions?
Questions.
Comments? Commissioner Moser?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, just a comment. I was able to tune into the Dilworth City Council meeting last night, so I appreciate the presentation, Ted, and I concur with you. I think it's an asset to Clay County, not only aesthetically, but obviously serves a need within the community with some housing needs, so thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
Now, you said, Rhonda, you said the funding comes from the state. So it's not costing the county anything on this project, or?
No, we administer the housing support program with or without this development. We have about 400 people on average per month on the housing support program. So, but it's total state funds. So we administer it on behalf of the state.
I understood you to say that the funds go to the applicant and they pay the rent, then. So what happens if they don't pay the rent?
Well, in this case, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the housing support payments for the rent are vendor-paid. And in this case, they would be vendor-paid to Lakes and Prairies, who will then pay the rent.
Oh, I thought you said they were going to the applicant.
No, I'm sorry, yep.
Commissioner Kaylee.
How does the state define long-term homelessness? What is that?
Oh, man, that's a question for Emma.
So long-term homeless is if you've had four or more episodes of homelessness in the past three years or one year continuously. And as far as homeless, they count if you're doubled up staying with friends or family, if you're staying in a shelter, if you're staying outside, a place not meant for human habitation. Those will all count as part of an episode.
And then one more.
Yes, okay, yes.
So I'm very excited to hear that there's going to be more accessible housing going into the community. I've been hearing regularly that there's a big need for that. And I was just wondering how many of these units are going to be considered accessible? And will it be more than just the ones that we're supporting with this project?
When you're, oh, go ahead, Ted.
I was going to say, when you mean accessible, are you meaning like rent levels like accessible? Or, you know, like a handicap?
Like wheelchair mobility.
Yeah, so there is a requirement, and all of our units are, I believe, like the B standard, so they can be accessible. But there's more than just, I don't know the exact count. I'm going to have to talk to architects. But there's more than just, you know, the, like, there's probably more than five, I guess, is what I'm getting at. So there, and all units can be, I believe, you know, modified to be ADA accessible.
Okay, so there would be a mixture of those different bedroom arrangements that would be considered handicap accessible?
Yep.
So, Rhonda, you had mentioned, you know, there's, we probably have 400-plus units within our county right now, and we administer those. So that is some work involvement from our staff too, right? And is this one that also then, that we're able to obtain a cost share on the employment?
Yeah, so when I said 400, that's, would be 400 applicants or cases per month. And of course, we administer this program on the behalf of the state. However, the staff that administer this program, we do get approximately 50% federal financial participation on their salaries.
So they're going to Commissioner Gross's question, that there is some financial involvement on behalf of the county?
Yes, that is, that is true, just in administering the program. That is.
Right. And then also, when we sign these letters saying that we're going to commit to nine of the 40 units or whatever, that commitment is as long as there is a federal and state program available.
For the housing support program.
The housing support.
Correct.
So if something, you know, it's very, it's been around for a long time. If something ever happened there, Clay County wouldn't necessarily be on the hook then for making those rental payments for it.
Correct, correct.
Well, okay. I just want to follow up. I think this is another good opportunity for us in Clay County, as Commissioner Moser was at it. It's nice to see the support from Dilworth. Commissioner Moser.
I also want to state that I appreciate the fact that we're looking at some of the housing issues in cities other than Moorhead within our county. And I think it's, that's something that we've had discussion with city councils and townships about those concerns in the past few years. And I think making sure we look at what the needs are in Barnesville or the Hollies of the world is also appropriate. And I think we can't just assume that the housing concerns are only in our largest city in the county.
All right.
The one addition.
So you're looking for, you're looking for authorization on our behalf to sign that?
Yes, yes, to sign the necessary documents. And the ones that I had submitted in your packet were, of course, incomplete. All, there's some sections that I will complete in terms of our partnership in the project and how we were involved in the various pieces of it. So I'll complete those. And with your approval, would sign them for Commonwealth submission to Minnesota Housing Finance.
And I do want to add, I really appreciate the fact that they give this presentation to the local governing body as well. I think that's really important to share that with, you know. And if it ends up, if they have interest in looking at Barnesville, if this is successful or a Holly, whatever, I think it's important to be involved with those councils to gain their support, which I'm sure they would, so. All right, I guess I would entertain a motion to, based on the recommendation or request.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you all for being here today. Welcome again to Clay County. And thank you, Ted, for being present to show us your plans.
Yeah, and if anyone has any questions, you know, going forward or wants to reach out for more information, you know, feel free to email or call me. I'm always happy to talk and, you know, answer any questions anyone may have.
All right. And thank you, Emma, for being here as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we got some bid openings here for Safe Routes to School Projects in Holly. Do you have a bid tabulation sheets? Okay. All right, Justin.
Good morning. I'm here today to open bids for the Safe Routes to School project in Holly. We're acting as a project sponsor, so this one won't come out of our state aid budget or anything. Holly did receive a grant for this project. We opened bids electronically at nine o'clock and there was two electronic bidders and then there was one paper bid received. The first electronic bid was from Celine Brothers Incorporated out of Holly. They do have a complete bid. I have their bid bond right here in the amount of five percent. And their total bid is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. The second electronic bid is Hough Incorporated out of Detroit Lakes. They do have a complete bid and they did submit their bid bond online. And their bid amount is four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. And then the one paper bid I received was from Northern Improvement. And they do have a bid bond in the amount of five percent. And their total bid is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents.
And just for the record, do you want to read what the engineer's estimate was?
And the engineer's estimate was four...
Okay, I can, I'll read it. It's four hundred and fifty thousand, five seventy-three ten. So, we're a little bit over.
A little bit over.
What's, what's, what, what do you recommend that we do?
I would recommend approving the low bid of Hough Incorporated contingent upon no errors. Usually, there is no errors on the electronic bids, but we always tabulate the paper one just to make sure that there wasn't an error and then also contingent upon approval of the city of Holly.
So, I would imagine, does it, does the bid amount, low bid amount still fall within their grant?
So, there is some non-participating costs on this project. Their grant, I believe, was three hundred thousand and their initial estimate for non-participating costs was around that one twenty-five mark, I believe, so.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the low bid contingents on?
The city of Holly's approval.
And the?
And no errors.
No errors, okay. Commissioner?
My question would be if approved by us and the city of Holly, who, I assume it's a fifty-fifty match on who comes up with the extra money. It's not been?
No, their grant, their grant is capped. So, if the bid came in under, then obviously they'd be capped at, say, if it came in at two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, they'd be capped at that amount, but when it comes in over, that would fall upon the city of Holly.
Okay.
So, the, the spot, we're the sponsor of, of the grant application, right?
Yep, and as the sponsor, you have to hold the bid opening, advertise. You have to be the contract holder.
The local entity picks up the local share.
Correct.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to?
So, I'll make a motion to approve the low bid.
With the conditions that?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mosel, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, Justin?
Thank you.
Bring that back to Holly and?
Yep.
All right. All right, we'll go into our committee reports. Mr. Kaylee, would you like to start today?
Sure, why not? On Wednesday, the seventh, I attended the Morehead Business Association meeting. Matheur Allier, who is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for Morehead Public Schools, did a presentation and several other MAP staff added to that as well, talking about how equity and inclusion culture is taken very seriously with Morehead Public Schools. And those in attendance talked about how they want to continue to make strides in these areas and set all of our children up for success. There was a really great discussion there. I also attended that same day, the Drug Court graduation. It's really fun to attend those and I was so pleased to be invited. The graduate is excited to take charge of her life using the tools that she got from the program and she's excited to become a business owner, so nice to have that. Also, on the seventh, I attended a Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Board meeting discussing ongoing negotiations with the city for use of space in that building. Later that evening, there was a Morehead City Planning Commission meeting that I attended. We approved a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility on Twelfth Avenue South with Diamond Rock Development. We also approved an amendment to the comprehensive plan and a rezone request for Thor investments regarding a couple of properties on Apple Tree Lane. And we also approved a request by Carlson and Carlson for a planned unit development by conditional use permit to allow flexibility in design standards for roof pitch on Oak Street North. They're building an eco-friendly, single-family dwelling and the design looks really cool. I'm excited to see how that comes to fruition. On Thursday, the eighth, I attended the Rural Cities and County Joint Meeting, as we all did. We got great updates from the cities and from department heads and had a good discussion that evening. Monday, the twelfth, I attended the Community Resilience Roundtable. And there was just continued discussion about building resiliency in our rural communities and a lot of the resources offered through extension services. I'm constantly amazed at how many services that they provide our communities. If you are looking for anything, extension is a good place to go. Financial, agricultural, yeah, they just cover a gamut. There was also further discussion on the childcare crisis in our state and looking for some solutions there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross.
On Tuesday, we, with, after the meeting, we had, Commissioner Dave and I went to Criminal Justice there. We haven't met for a few months and then it was mostly an update of what they're planning on doing. Some discussions as, I don't know if anybody calls them or not, but they're just using their cellphones now. Department of Corrections is also doing some training. They're in cooperation with the jail staff that doing some training together. Also, they were talking about moving to, the court administration is moving to second floor, which we've been aware for some time now. Wednesday, at Wild Rice, the One Watershed One Plan was approved. I mean, we got the information on that. They've received, they're gonna receive one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to, to work on their plans for, that's their payment for the first two years and that should be available every two years. The central part of the Wild Rice Watershed Port is pretty much where they're gonna be concentrating on. They've got a lot of sediment that they wanna take care of there. That's a sediment buildup. The Becker County Soil and Water Conservation District is gonna handle the One Watershed One Plan for Wild Rice. That afternoon, Wednesday afternoon, I, to virtual, I watched Duck Court, which is, again, they had another graduation there. It was nice to see that we, another person made it through the, through the court there. Thursday, at Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, there Kurt Canaglia report that veterans who die of COVID, they're eligible for some, to FEMA, they'd be eligible for some funeral expenses. Also, at the VA, the veterans, well, we've known that veterans can get their shots there, but their spouses are also available for shots.
Frank, can I, can I just interrupt for a second on your, on your comment on the veterans for the funeral reimbursement? That is, I think that is also available to every family that experienced a death that was associated to COVID through FEMA. I don't know exactly what all the criteria is, but I just think for every family, and I think we had, what, how many of them? Eighty-nine and in Clay County, all of those eighty-nine families should, should, there's a link to FEMA for that particular purpose that they can call and ask questions and get information. But it's, so it's, it's not just the veterans, it's all families.
Okay.
So, I, just important, okay?
On Thursday afternoon, then, we had that Rural Cities, which, like, Janice said, everybody was in attendance to that and good information meeting for the, for the people there. Monday, yesterday, we had interviews for the IT Director. We're gonna have some more on Thursday. So, hopefully next week sometime, we, we can make an announcement. That's the plan right now. Make an announcement as far as a successful candidate there. After that meeting, I went to the MRC, the Minnesota Rural Caucus, a meeting. I guess, I, I don't know what to say about those. Just a lot of discussion going on there. Sometimes you don't know what subject they're working on. You know, one will have one comment, another, another county will have another comment, you know, and they never stick to the same subject or something like that, you know? It's just a conglomerate of questions and stuff like that. And I think I've been on this committee now for, I don't know, probably eight, nine years and the main functions has always been transportation and broadband, transportation and broadband. And that's pretty much the AMC's plan also, so sometimes I feel there's duplications, but that's pretty much what the discussion was and?
Well, then throw in a few DNR issues from time to time.
Yeah, there you go, okay.
Trust me, I shared that for a while and I know, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I, I know Channing was there too, so I'm sure she'll have a full report of that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mosel?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the American Rescue Committee. We are now dealing with that next round of funding from the federal government in terms of coronavirus aid. It has, because there's been a change in presidential leadership, that's now been renamed from the CARES Act to the President, or American Rescue Committee. So, we are in the beginning stages. There will be twelve million approximately dollars coming to Clay County to deal with the residual effects from COVID. And so, we're beginning to evaluate how to best use the funds to positively affect the most amount of Clay County citizens as possible. I would request, both Commissioner Campbell and I are on that CARES Act Committee just in terms of paperwork to make sure that we make an action to rename that committee. If one of you would like to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaylee, all right. And the, the appointments will remain the same. We'll just have a new name called the American Carers, or American Rescue Committee, all right?
Great.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried, all right?
Thank you. So, yes, we'll continue to work on that going forward. It, it will not, just because of the timeline, it will not be as condensed of a deadline as we dealt with the first round, so that will give us some time to really analyze. I also attended the Drug Court graduation. I continue to maintain that that is a significant investment in the people of Clay County. I was really inspired and, and humbled by the commitment of all of those, those in that, that program right now, just to better themselves and better their families in the process. I had a discussion with Rory Beal, a follow-up on the tobacco ordinance conversation that we'd had the prior, prior board meeting. I also attended the One Watershed One Plan for the Wild Rice Watershed District. Commissioner Gross highlighted that correctly. I attended the Rural Cities meeting. I continue to maintain that I think that's one of the most positive things that we've added in the last few years to make sure that we're listening from all of the cities, listening to the cities within Clay County to really hear how, what trends they're seeing, what concerns they're seeing. It allows us to make sure we're providing services that aligns with the needs of our county as a whole. I had a discussion with Representative Keeler that I'd referenced about the seventy-two-hour hold for vaccines. I think there's, there needs to be some flexibility from the state and I think Kathy has really been vocal about making sure that, that our county staff does whatever possible to help with that, but I think that would really make sure that we have the availability to reach folks that want their vaccine in a different time setting. That evening, I attended the mid-session legislative update from Representative Mark Wart, Representative Keeler, and Senator Ekin. There continues to be quite a fury of bills and hearings at the state level. You know, I think that COVID has allowed the availability to sit in and listen to some of those hearings more for those of us in greater Minnesota to be able to tune in virtually. So, I encourage any folks that are interested in that, you can go on the state website and find those hearing times. Yesterday, I attended the Minnesota Rural County Caucus meeting, as Commissioner Gross highlighted as well. We had an update, excuse me, on some, some new conversations that are happening in terms of environmental reviews, making sure there's environmental review, implementing climate concerns in any, in any conditional permits. I think that would really affect us locally as we deal with those permit applications. It's in the beginning stages, but, you know, I think there's a substantial cost if you require an environmental review on every application. Those reviews can cost upwards of, or at least starting at forty thousand dollars. And I think that we locally have done some things to make sure we're addressing all of the climate concerns in our conditions of permits. We also had an update from Koochichin County. There's some legislative happenings in regards to county-owned properties and how you can disperse of those. I think that would affect us locally a little bit, not as much as some of those northern counties. They really do have a lot of county-owned property. And then there's just a whole list of highlighted bills to update. I agree with Commissioner Gross. Sometimes it gets a little sideways in terms of personal preferences, but I, I think out of it, at least each individual county can then take the conversations back to their county and change or champion something if they think that that's something that they would like to do.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but there also that they discussed out on the Enbridge, you know, how some of that?
Oh, that's right.
How that's gonna affect some of the counties, though, if that Enbridge project is not continuing or the assessment towards the Enbridge Pipeline.
That's a?
Some of those colonies are gonna be hurting.
That's a, a big thing. I think that would really negatively affect some of those townships for sure.
Excuse me, go ahead.
No, thank you for bringing that up. I wasn't as detailed as I should have been. Yesterday, we did have a meeting, Commissioner Gross, or Commissioner Campbell, excuse me, and I, as, with Kirk Rosenberg, Steve Larson, Joe Olson, virtually, or I attended virtually. But in regards to our Solidways Transfer Station, we're getting, working with a contractor at risk that we had hired and making sure that there's some value engineering to make sure that that's a financially wise project moving forward. There are some concerns, as you all, I'm sure, have heard in the news. The cost of construction has not decreased in the past few months. If anything, it's really seen steep inclines. So, that's concerning for us, but I think we've also secured seven point five million dollars from the state in terms of bonding dollars and, and I think that will really help us to move forward. It would have cost us a lot more dollars locally to do that project without that, so we'll see how we can best collaborate that project. I believe, oh, the only other thing I did have is I've talked with Dave Overbow several times this week. As you all know, road restrictions are on and now we receive? times this week. As you all know, road restrictions are on, and now we received several inches of rain, and those gravel roads in the county are rough. They're really rough. And, you know, I think we're in a holding pattern. Our budget did show that we're adding more rock to some of these roads, but in the meantime, it's gonna be deep. So tread carefully. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right. On Tuesday, the sixth, I also attended the American Rescue meeting. The only thing that I would add is that we're still trying to figure out just what all, what the qualifications and requirements are. And that's, it's been quite vague so far. And so we're starting off slow, and we wanna wait till we certainly know what the federal government wants us to target. I think there's clear, gonna be clear guidelines there, and they're not, unless Brian and Steve have heard something lately, they're still not where we wanna be. I think we have certainly, we have talked about some ideas that we'd like to see that would really help our communities and our county. But we wanna make sure before we move forward with those, that they would be qualifying events to work with. That same day, I did have a diversion executive meeting, and primarily that was to, the focus was on last Friday morning's press conference with Senator Hoven and Senator Klobuchar. It was really nice to see Senator Klobuchar here for that purpose. It's the first time she's been here and publicly, I mean, she's supported this thing all along. But I think she was extremely pleased that there was, that the lawsuits had ended. And so I think that was significant, that she came here. They're, they did announce that they've awarded the largest federal contract so far now, and that was the I-29 road raise. It's sixty-five million dollars, I believe it is. It's probably about a three-mile length of road that's gonna be raised, and that's gonna be done in conjunction with the Red River Control Structure. As you know, the, when you raise a road, you have to have fill come from someplace, and their plan is to use some of the fill that they have to dig out for the Red River Control Structure to use to do that. So they're, they look at that as a win-win situation with two different portions of the project benefiting each other. So it's just good to see the efforts in design and the interest of public money to save in those areas. Then on Thursday, I also attended, and I got there just a little bit late for the Small Cities and Counties meeting, and thank Commissioner Mojo for kind of running that in my absence. And I do wanna say that those cities really gave good reports. I was really pleased with the effort and the length that they took to talk about their communities and the good things they have going on. And, yeah, that's, that has been a really good meeting, and I enjoyed that one. And I do wanna point out that they really gave support and thanks to our Public Health Department for the efforts during this pandemic. They were good, a good shout-out of support for Kathy and the volunteers and everybody who's been working. Yesterday, Commissioner Gross and I, we did, in the morning, we did have three interviews for the IT position. We have, we have one more Thursday morning. And I do wanna say that the three interviews that we've already done, we have some very strong candidates. So I'm pleased to see that, although I'm, it's gonna be disappointing to see Tim Dent leave, it's, I think we're gonna have some real good opportunities to fill that position. And as Commissioner Mojo said on that afternoon, we did have a solid waste meeting. We talked about several things. Talked about some potential changes to the resource recovery, the campus, some potential changes to the access. They've come up with some designs that might be able to save a little money in terms of, and how much land is being used for that. And then we continue the discussion, and I know Commissioner Gross, you've asked me about this in the past, about the operations, and I think right now, we're, we've asked Steve to line up a meeting with the City of Moorhead, so we can get together and come up with what we think will be the best solution for the end operations of the facility when it opens. And we continue to talk about the solid waste budget and how this is all gonna fit together within that solid waste budget. And I, Steve, I know when we get to your report, I know when we, when we worked on the correctional facility and the Law Enforcement Center, Commissioner Wayland and I, who served in that committee, were given, we were given some authorization to authorize certain changes that might have to be made, that in absence of having to wait for a board meeting in the event that there's time-sensitive deals, and I, for example, right now, the steel prices, they're probably going up on a daily basis. And so I, so I, hopefully, within your report, Steve, you can talk about that and what you think would be a recommended amount that I would like to see Commissioner Mojo and I, who serve on that committee, to be able to make some quick decisions to save money, when need be. So I guess I would leave that up to you to recommend what dollar number you think would be appropriate there. So my report is done, Steve, so we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And maybe we could just start right there. I think that one of the things that we, as you mentioned, with the law enforcement and the correctional and juvenile facility, this board approved both then Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell to spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars. During our most recent CARES Committee, they allowed Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell to spend up to fifty thousand dollars. And I think, really with the uncertainty, I know that we wanna certainly have a level of comfortability for the rest of you. I think with the uncertainty, I guess the recommendation that I would look at for your consideration would be between that seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollar range. And I don't know if Brian has any other thoughts on that, but I think due to just the fluctuation of prices, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, we would probably wanna see something that would be large enough to make an impact, so we don't have to wait for those future days to...
And if I can follow up. So, so that's a decision, and ultimately, it still comes back, and then, you know, it still, will ultimately get the full board support, but in absence of, or the need to protect from even higher costs, this is something that, I think it worked well in the, in the two other facilities that we used it on. That's his numbers. It wasn't my numbers, in terms of what he's recommending. Does the board have any thoughts on that?
I mean, this is a really big project, so numbers get bigger. You start adding zeros, the bigger the project gets. So I'm okay with that. My husband works in the steel industry, and I know it's insane what has happened, and will continue to happen based on steel mills being shut down. So I'm okay with that.
Do you need a motion?
I think we need a motion to authorize.
Go move.
All right. And that is to what amount?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Members of the commission, could we clarify an actual number that you would feel comfortable with? I'd propose between seventy-five and a hundred. Could you provide a number within your proposal?
Can you put a dollar number to your motion?
I'll go up to a hundred thousand.
We have a motion to authorize up to a hundred thousand dollars in potential changes.
I will second. That's the number that was in my head as well.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee, and we have a comment by Commissioner...
I think, just a follow-up, I appreciate that. I also want you to know that this isn't any way of circumventing the board. It will still need full board approval, but this would just be to avoid any further delays in costs that could be incurred by waiting until another Tuesday morning board.
And there, if I can just say, too, sometimes it's not only cost of product, it might also be that there's been a change in a subcontractor that sometimes might alter, there might be a need on the part of, in this case, construction engineers, to bring in a different subcontractor, and that different subcontractor could potentially have a different price, you know. And so we, we might have to make some decisions in that regard, too. So, so there's a variety of reasons why it can happen, but all of them are to keep the project on time. And even though we do make some changes financially, we're still trying to keep it within, within a total budget that we've kinda outlined for it. So. All right. With that, if there's no other comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. All right, Steve, you can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On last Tuesday, I did also participate in the American Rescue Fund Committee meeting. I would, just to piggyback on Commissioner Campbell's comments that last week, there was an article in the forum about this. And again, I think the challenge that we have as government agencies at this point is we don't know from the U.S. Treasury yet what those guidelines are. In looking and listening to some of the concerns from citizens, it isn't a matter of this body and the bodies in this region don't know what to do with those funds. We have plenty of ideas that, and we're just waiting for that guidance. And so we're looking, looking forward to that. Had a number of solid waste discussions this past week with Kirk Rosenberg, our commissioners, Mike Love, in regards to the Resource Recovery Facility. On the seventh, County Management, again, we had our vaccine update, COVID update from Kathy. We also had a campus update. Just worth noting for our citizens, this weekend, court administration is going to be moving from the first-floor location to the second floor. And so come Monday, when our citizens report, our juries report, we'll need to, they'll need to go to the second floor. And so we'll be beginning now, next week then, the remodeling of their current location, which will have probation in it, and with a target date of hopefully right around June On the seventh, also, again, had a meeting on the Resource Recovery. We had an interview with the Barnesville Record Review on the Government Center. On the eighth, we had jail administrator interviews. Again, much like our IT department, we had very good candidates. Later that week, an offer was made to Justin Roberts. He is our Assistant County Administrator, or, excuse me, Assistant County Jail Administrator, and he had accepted that position and will be starting June first. And Julie Savat's last day will be July first, but she will be, they'll have about two weeks together, even though they've worked together for years, but they'll have about two weeks together in that, in that role. As mentioned earlier, we've continued to work with the DMV. Better part of Wednesday, we spent looking, continuing to discuss and look at efficiencies. They have seen an unbelievable amount of activity over the last few weeks, as the board's aware. Last year, the Real IDs were set to be in effect in October first. That was pushed for another year, and that that kind of allowed for a little bit of a slowdown, but we're seeing a very big push for people to get the new deadline done. And so that certainly has had an impact, but we'll continue to look at that and pick next week. Participated in the county-city meeting. Appreciate the city's participation. Again, as you all mentioned, we had great discussions. Friday, I participated in the AMC webinar on the American Rescue Plan with, run by MMB. Again, they provide more of an overview, necessarily, of all the programs that are offered. It's part of the American Rescue, it's anything specific to us, but AMC has indicated, as soon as we get more information, they'll be looking at establishing another webinar. Met with Joe Olson at a multiple, multiple issues, multiple times this past week. On the twelfth, we participated in the IT Director interview, that's been covered, and also the solid waste discussion that afternoon. Yesterday, I also met with James Liddonell and Josh Swanson in regards to some of the things at the Juvenile Center, impending legislation, and we have an upcoming advisory board meeting this week. Last night, I virtually, watched virtually the Moorhead City Council. The City Council did unanimously approve the land exchange and purchase agreement. And so they're going to be wrapping up some environmental work, just to ensure there's no issues with the property. It doesn't appear that there are any concerns there. We did, we did provide a verbal notice to the state licensing division about this possible sale. With the, with the actual, I guess we're actually moving forward here, I would be looking to provide a written notice to the city, or, excuse me, to the state. The contract that we have does have a thirty-day out. The proposal that I would have for the commission would be allowing them to utilize that space up until December thirty-first of this year. They also have had some dialogue already with the City of Moorhead, just to kind of talk about what the city's plans are for that space. But, but I wish, the board has signed the lease agreement, and so I would be looking for your, for your approval to provide a letter to the state invoking the thirty-day notice with...
Steve, I, you know, I think we have to do that, right, according to our contract, but I, I don't know that one more week would hurt. I think we should wait till we have a full board here, in case, just in case Commissioner Ebringer would have some questions regarding that. So, if that's okay, if we can have that as an agenda item for this week.
Add it to the agenda.
All right, will do.
Thank you.
Let's see. Joe's, again, is continuing to work with the design, the storage unit. We have a building committee this week, we're meeting tomorrow, and I believe we'll have a presentation for this board next Tuesday. Just wanted to touch on one other thing, provide a update, try to provide an annual update, but also a quarterly update on our sales tax projections. Our sales tax on our, for our law enforcement, our correctional facility, continue to come in very strong. For example, from last year's first quarter, we have roughly ninety-five thousand dollars more in the first three months of this year versus last year. I believe this year, we're anticipating our budget, right around two point two million, is where we had projected. Last year, we ended with three point five million. And what that's allowed us to do as a county is to adjust some of those levy dollars and adjust them into different departments. And so we'll, we'll hope that those numbers continue to come in as strong as they have, and we'll continue to provide those updates. And lastly, I'd like to thank Rita for stepping in this week. Colleen's on vacation. She'll be returning tomorrow, but she's set up the board for us and is here this morning, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Steve. I did wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Kelson from Otter Tail County, IT person, who sat in with our interviews Monday, and he will be back again on Thursday. I think it's nice to get a perspective of somebody outside of the county who is also doing that same type of work. So he's, it was nice to hear his thoughts on the interviews Monday and again on Thursday. So thank you to Mr. Kelson for being here. Brian, do you have anything? Rita, do you have anything from, something to sign? Okay, we can do that. All right. I didn't wanna reckon...